This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Certification of this notice is on file in the office's township book. Advanced written notice of this meeting was posted on the Bolton Board in the municipal building, was mailed to the Burnton County Council, was filed with the Clerk of Mount Holly Township, and was mailed to all persons for requesting and paying for such notice. Please rise for the purposes. All right, and I do have to open up the floor to nominations for a temporary chair person. Do you have any nominations for our temporary chair person for the meeting tonight?
I nominate Ristic Falcone.
I have a second.
I have a second.
Any other nominations? The nominations are closed. Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. DeFalcone?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Ossier?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Mr. Parker, did I say this?
Yes.
And Ms. Green?
Yes.
Okay, I will now turn the meeting over to the chairperson.
Thank you, Joel. Going with number two, matters referred by the town council. We have the ordinances on the agenda, ordinance number 2023-3, ordinance number 2023-4, ordinance number 2023-5, and resolution number 2023-42. We're taking 2020 time. Ordinance 2023-3 is ordinance of the town council of the township of Mount Holly, and this is making my application to be one central business district of the township's code.
If we were to reference, anytime a governing body amends the township's code, and the amendment deals with a revision to the zoning ordinance, they have to report to the land use board for your comment or review and suggestions, any suggested changes, and also finding that it's consistent with the master plan.
That's what we can basically go through with, what it is, it basically really expand the permitted uses in the B1 zone, and what they're gonna be doing is adding tattoo parlors, which used to be prohibited. And another...
Yeah.
And another part of it is the signage for the tattoo parlors is gonna be restricted to the rear of the buildings, because I guess the front facade of them aren't too visible. And they're gonna add some prohibited uses, pawn shops, gold and coin exchange businesses are gonna be added to the prohibited list. So that's basically a nutshell, they're gonna be voting on.
Any questions from Sir Collier? Come on.
Is there action on ordinance 2023-3?
Would be a motion to, Tim, do you recommend the board find that it's consistent with the purposes and intent of the master plan?
Yes, I do.
Is there a motion to report back, to authorize the board secretary, and in consultation with the solicitor, to report the board's finding back to the governing body, and to find that it's consistent with the master plan, and to recommend the adoption of the ordinance? Is there a motion to that?
My motion.
No, second that. Just about on that. Roll call?
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. DeFalcone?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Ossier?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
All right, we're going to ordinance number 2023-4, this is an ordinance of the township council, and this is amending Chapter 149 of the land use code of the township of Mount Holly, implementing a cap on retail cannabis dispensaries in Mount Holly Township.
So this is the same type of review, is to report back to the governing body on this minor revision to the ordinance, and it just puts a cap on, as you said, just puts a cap on the number of campus retail licenses.
Yeah, basically it's gonna limit them to five in business zones, and it's consistent with.
So same thing as there was a motion to re-recommend adoption as is, and authorize the board, and finding it's consistent with the master plan, and authorizing the board secretary and the solicitor to report back to the township community clerk, and next to the Ms. Ossier and the person.
I'll second.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. DeFalcone?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Ossier?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Last, to be a resolution 2023-42, this is town council resolution to support for the application of Ivy Hall to open a retail cannabis dispensary at 600 High Street in Mount Holly.
For your reference, that, that's not something that requires land use board action, that should have been moved from the agenda. That is a governing body legislative act in terms of supporting a cannabis dispensary. There's no plus or minus for this board to act upon, so it should not have been included. So I would not act on that, it's not necessary. I think the licenses get voted on and approved by the state level after support from the local county.
That works. I'm moving forward to your business applications. There was application 2022-5, this is for a application on 400 Mountain View Ave, requesting a D1 variance to permit the existing building to be utilized as a duplex. The decision postponed to April 17th.
So for anyone who has interest in application number 2022-5 for 400 Mountain View Avenue, the applicant is nominee Woodson, and she seeks for block 28 lot 10. This application will be adjourned to the April 17th meeting without further notice or publication. So that one will not be heard tonight, will be adjourned to the next meeting.
And next we have the applicant 2023-1, this is Mount Holly Enterprises LLC. This is for preliminary final site plan approval. This is for the build new Taco Bell, a new 2,000 pound per foot retail building in the space that is block 127 lot 1.04, in the B4 zone.
Good evening, Christopher Burr from the law firm, Paul Rico Lewis and Burr, here on behalf of the applicant, Mount Holly Enterprises LLC.
What was your last name again?
It's Burr, B-E-R-R. If you wanted to, could you bring me the display over here? I don't think you can see anything over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody sitting here?
No.
We can use this, and then if you need to rotate it to the public, can you?
Perfect.
And there's some paper copies that they're gonna pass out now as well for a...
Are these documents, are we gonna mark them as exhibit A1?
Yeah, so we have two exhibits, one, one is exhibit A1, it's a rendered copy of our site plan. On the second page of exhibit A1 is an aerial photo of the site and the surrounding area. Then exhibit A2 is a rent, or a rendered architectural elevation of the building.
And would you, your firm, or your company, provide electronic copies to the board secretary?
Yes, absolutely. I have some extra copies of any... So I think the exhibits have made their way around. So this is an application for approvals for 601 High Street, which is block 127 lot 1.04 on the tax map. The relief that we seek tonight is preliminary major site plan approval with both variants. I will note, our application as submitted did also seek final approval, but based on comments that we received from Mr. Alamo's office, we are going to hold off on some final approval at this point, and will come back for final approval at a later date. We do ask that the board, if we are approved, hold the application open so that we can just resubmit plans at that time for, for final approvals. With me tonight are Joe DePascal, representative of the applicant, Brian Cleary from the Pettit Group, our engineer, and Nathan Mosley from Shropshire Associates, our traffic engineer. So by way of brief overview, as this board knows, this property is located on High Street, it's just northwest of the Acme Shopping Center, and right across the street from the Mount Holly Bypass. It's located in the B4 standard business district where retail sales of food and goods are permitted. This property is currently approved out of an existing Taco Bell restaurant, and has a single drive-through lane. Of the parking areas, signage, and associated improvements. The applicant, pardon me, the applicant proposes to demolish the existing improvements and to construct a new 2,722 square foot Taco Bell with a, with dual drive-through lanes and an adjacent 2,555 square foot retail building, together with parking signage and site improvements. We do seek a few bulk variances as part of the application, which relate to parking areas and signs. The fir-, the first variance that we seek is from Section 149-83A to permit 46 parking spaces where your, where 52 spaces currently exist, and where your ordinance would require 104. That same condition also gives rise to a variance from Section 149-83B, because the proposed area of the parking spaces is 9,200 square feet, where 21,108 square feet would be required. Agile here in the testimony tonight, there is ample justification for that relief. The proposed spaces are more than sufficient to meet the demand of the Taco Bell restaurant and, and the proposed retail building. The, the proposed improvements to the Taco Bell restaurant are consistent with the demand where, which shows that the vast majority of the business through the Taco Bell goes through the drive-through. There are internal improvements with, with the construction of the new building. Operational efficiencies will be, will be built into the buildings to allow better processing of orders and to permit faster, faster circulation through the drive-through, and will account for the fact that the overwhelming majority of the patrons do use that drive-through rather than parking. We also seek a variance from the requirement of 149-83C to permit a loading space. Again, you'll hear in the testimony tonight that a loading space is not necessary operationally. Deliveries are currently managed during hours when the, when the Taco Bell is not open, and adding a loading space here on the site would provide for, 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 for less, for a more, pardon me, provides for better site circulation and doesn't require unnecessary impervious coverage for a loading space. We also seek a few variances for signage. That we, we seek a variance from, from Section 149-88H to permit four facade signs, that's three for the proposed Taco Bell and one for the proposed retail building. The, I don't think it's expressly stated in your ordinance, but our understanding of the ordinance is that one facade sign is permitted, and, and so we do see the relief to permit the three signs for the Taco Bell and the one for, for the retail building. We also seek a relief from that same technicality ordinance, because the aggregate sign area of the signs will exceed 60 square feet. Your ordinance seems to contemplate one single facade sign out of the 60 square foot maximum sign area, and because we permit, we propose more than one sign, we do propose to exceed that. But each, each of the proposed signs will be less than that 60 square foot maximum. The, the aggregate of the proposed facade signs is 73.65 square feet, and the proposed signage for the retail building will also not exceed, will not exceed the 60 square foot, 60 square foot sign, sign, sign area in the ordinance. And finally, we seek a variance from Section 149-88J to permit the proposed menu board signage for the drive-through to be 25.1 square foot each, where informational signs in the ordinance are limited to two square feet. This variance is necessary to accommodate a menu board sign, a menu board sign of two square feet, it's simply not going to be functional, and we think that relief is justified to accommodate the, the use of, of the drive-through. We have received the review letters of your professionals. Generally speaking, we will agree to comply with the commentary in their letters, except as noted during our testimony tonight. I will note that there are a few proposed changes to our plans that we are going to propose as a result of those review letters. First is that we are going to shift this northern portion of the parking lot just slightly to, to, to make the setback of that parking area compliant, whereas as proposed currently, it would require variance, relief for being slightly too close to the top line, so we will make that change so that that is compliant. Second, we are going to increase the width of the sidewalk in front of the building to be six feet. That was a comment in both of the review letters that we received, and to, and so in order to, to better accommodate pedestrians going into the building, we are going to widen that sidewalk from five feet to six. That, that change will give rise to a slightly reduced length of the parking spaces from 20 feet to 19, which that will trigger a new variance, but we think that, that variance again is, is justified because, well, for two reasons, because 19 feet is sufficient for the proposed parking, for the use of the proposed parking spaces, and because it will better accommodate pedestrians going into the building. So with those introductory comments, I'd like to call our engineer, Brian Cleary.
And just for the board's reference, I did have a chance to review the notice provided, and the notice provided was timely and specific enough in terms of the relief required, including some wiggle room for additional design rigors and various things. I know that there was a question about whether it was complete for finals, because of the stormwater plan issue, but they're, they're hunting that to another time, so we're okay for going forward with permanent, with all variance.
Great, thank you.
And so Mr. Cleary, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, to hold truth, and nothing but the truth before this board?
Yep. All right. Brian, so, okay, perfect.
You go through professional?
Yes, okay, all right. And so can you just give the board a brief overview of your professional qualifications?
Yes, I graduated from Temple University with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I've been a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 2013, I believe, licensed in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Maryland, and I have a not expired license, but I'm also licensed in North Carolina. I've been in front of close to 100 boards and provided testimony for similar projects, so that's...
And, and you're familiar with this property, with this application?
Yes.
And your office prepared these plans?
Yes.
Based on that testimony, I would ask that the board accept Mr. Cleary as a professional, or as an expert in engineering?
Any questions?
No questions.
So he's accepted, accepted the board?
Thank you. So Brian, just before we jump into the substance, you were here obviously for my introductory comments, correct?
Yes.
Were those comments true and accurate?
Yes, a small clarification, and I'm sure the board planner would also bring it up. According to the board planner's review of the proposed signage, we're actually proposing six signs for the Taco Bell.
And so pull up the rendering.
Exhibit A3, correct. So each sign has two components to it, the bell and text. The board planner is interpreting them as separate signs. We typically consider them combined as one sign, however, we'll have to request the, the variance for six signs. And based upon a conversation I had with the board planner, the facade sign requirements are per use, so the retail technically won't require a variance, because we're only proposing one sign, and it will not exceed 60 square feet, so just a technical clarification.
Okay, so yeah, so just make sure I'm clear there, so the, the bell and the wordmark, we're gonna count those as two separate signs?
Correct.
So the three places on the building that appear, the two signs each, or rather than one, as I was...
Correct, correct.
Okay, great, great, okay. Now, so let's refer to exhibit A1, the aerial. So just, just very briefly, just can you just provide an aerial, kind of where the property is and what's there now?
Yes, the property is located at the intersection of Mount Holly Bypass and Burnton Mount Holly Road. It's located north of the Acme Shopping Center, is currently developed as a Taco Bell restaurant with a single drive-through and associated site improvements.
Okay, now just turning back to the rendering, so just from a, just kind of the big picture perspective as far as what's being proposed. I mentioned during my introductory comments that there is a Taco Bell restaurant through the drive-through at a retail building. Does that accurately describe the scope of proposed improvements?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so let's just talk a little bit about access to the site, and then sort of the customer experience, you know, circulation through the site for the Taco Bell.
So access to the site, it currently exists at the intersection, we will be improving that to provide new pavement, new 88 ramps, new concrete aprons, based upon review comments from the county, which we have received conditional approval for. So people would enter from that main driveway, proceed straight through with the Taco Bell and the retail center on your left. You can either park if you want to access either of those, the interior of those buildings, or enter the dual drive-through at the rear of the site. Once you, so there's two ordering boards for each drive-through lane. Once you order, you process to the rear of the Taco Bell, pick up your food, and you leave at the same entrance you came at.
Okay, and so as far as the drive-through, there, there, well, you know what, let's do, I'll go parking first. So how many parking spaces are proposed?
We are proposing 46 parking spaces.
Okay, and under the ordinance, how many are required?
104 spaces are required, and that is driven by the fast food parking requirement.
Okay, now, what, what's the actual parking demand for, for pretty interesting Taco Bell, it hasn't approached 104 spaces?
No, it does not. However, I would like to defer to our traffic engineer, he performed an analysis of the existing parking demands and the drive-through queuing requirements. So any specific testimony regarding those two items, I'd like to defer to him. But just as background, we do a lot of developments with this Taco Bell developer. Typically for the Taco Bell, we range anywhere from 22 parking spaces to about 30. 30 is really their sweet spot, just in case anything in extreme demand were to happen. But I think it's around 80 to 85 percent of their traffic is through the drive-through lane. So even with 30 parking spaces, we then have 14 available for the retail use, which I believe meets your ordinance requirements. It's a little short, but those, those two uses together, their peaks really want to intersect, so we believe the parking is more than sufficient, and as I indicated, that our traffic engineer will address any specific questions regarding their analysis.
Okay, great. So, oh great, so we, we, so at the front of the building, I mentioned that we are going to increase the width of the sidewalk, can you put that out on the plan?
Yes, so currently we're proposing a five-foot sidewalk width. I typically design with six-foot, however, those six-foot sidewalks are for nine-by-18 parking spaces. The township requires larger parking spaces, 10 by 20, which I typically see either in shopping centers with carts, so that there's ample room between both cars, for a cart to be able to make its way through. Or typically the longer lengths are in like Home Depot shopping centers, or anything that requires large trucks. So the Taco Bell and the small retail, the typical customers will be smaller vehicles, you actually'll have your occasional truck, but it would be a, a small portion of the customers. So what we're requesting is to reduce the length by one foot, to allow two feet of overhang onto the sidewalk. With that, the same justification would be made for the remainder of the spaces, to be 19 feet in length, we provide two feet of overhang everywhere, so we'd be able to cut down a little bit on impervious for parking length that we, we just don't think is required to be 20 feet long, especially since we're providing the two feet of overhang.
And, and so that, you mentioned nine by 18 is sort of a typical dimension that you see, and so, I mean, is it out of your experience that a nine by 18 space would be sufficient for retail use?
Yes.
Okay, and here we are, providing for 19 feet wide?
And 10 feet wide, so we won't be changing the width requirement.
Okay, and now are, are we proposing any EV, any EV spaces as required under the New Jersey model ordinance?
We will be providing one made-for-ease space, as required by the, the state.
Okay, all right, and I mentioned we're gonna shift that parking area, that's sort of the northwest of the property, is that accurate?
Yes.
And so that will comply with all the...
Yes, the parking, we will comply with the parking setback requirements of the ordinance.
Okay, and I believe there was a comment in Mr. Alamo's review... which I believe meets your ordinance requirements. Uh, it, it's a little short, but those, those two uses together, their peaks really want to intersect. So we believe the parking is more than sufficient, and as I indicated, that our traffic engineer will address any specific questions regarding their analysis.
Okay, great. So, exhibit A three, oh great, so we, we, so at the front of the building, I mentioned that we are going to increase the width of the sidewalk. Can you put that out on the plan?
Yes, so currently we're proposing a five-foot sidewalk width. I typically design with six foot, however, those six-foot sidewalks are for nine-by-eighteen parking spaces. The township requires larger parking spaces, ten-by-twenty, which I typically see either in shopping centers with carts, so that there's ample room between both cars for a cart to be able to make its way through. Or typically the longer lengths are in like Home Depot shopping centers or anything that requires large trucks. So the Taco Bell and the small retail, the typical customers will be smaller vehicles. You actually don't have your occasional truck, but it would be a, a small portion of the customers. So what we're requesting is to reduce the length by one foot to allow two feet of overhang onto the sidewalk. With that, the same justification would be made for the remainder of the spaces to be nineteen feet in length. We provide two feet of overhang everywhere. So we'd be able to cut down a little bit on impervious for parking length that we, we just don't think is required to be twenty feet long, especially since we're providing the two feet of overhang.
And, and so that, I, you mentioned a nine-by-eighteen is sort of a typical dimension that you see, and so, I mean, is it out of your experience that a nine-by-eighteen space would be sufficient for retail use?
Yes.
Okay. And here we are providing for nineteen feet wide.
Uh, and ten feet wide, so we, we won't be changing the width requirement.
Okay. And now, are, are we proposing any EV, any EV spaces as required under the New Jersey model ordinance?
Uh, we will be providing one major any space as required by the, the state.
Okay. All right. And I mentioned, we're going to shift that parking area that's sort of in the northwest of the property. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And so that will comply with all the?
Yes, the parking, we will comply with the parking setback requirements of the ordinance.
Okay, and I believe there was a comment in Mr. Alamo's review letter about increasing the width of one of the spaces for the retail building to twelve feet to accommodate loading. Could we do that?
Yes, we can provide a twelve-foot wide loading space for the retail.
Okay, great, and so will, will, and so as, as part of any approval that we, you'll detect out on the plans?
Correct, and I can work out the location with the board professionals.
Okay, let's talk a little bit about loading deliveries and trash management. So what, so we're just, let's take trash first. So where, where's the trash enclosure and how will a truck get to it?
Uh, trash is located at the dead end of the main driveway into the site. So a trash truck would access it via the main drive aisle and then drive around the bypass lane to, and to the, the access to Route five forty-one.
Is there enough room there through that bypass for a truck to navigate?
Uh, yes, it, it has no issues navigating, even with people in the drive-through lane.
Okay.
And we can provide turning templates on the plans to confirm that.
Okay. Loading spaces, so we do see the variance for not providing a loading space where one is, where one is required, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, what, why don't we underpose a loading space?
Uh, so Taco Bell performs all their loading during close hours. It's a Taco Bell truck. The delivery driver has a key to the store. They'll come in overnight and one person will do all the loading and offloading while no one else is on site. I provided a turning template to the board engineer demonstrating that a W fifty tractor-trailer can, can navigate around the sun without any issue.
Great.
Um, and for the retail space, we don't know exactly what's going in there. It'll be a small retail. The developer likes to do a lot of deals with cell phone providers, so any sort of loading for that would be handled via, the largest truck would probably be a single unit truck, but typically like a FedEx or UPS truck. So the twelve-foot by twenty-foot space would accommodate that kind of loading.
Okay, and so what, what would the impact be if, if we were to add a loading space to the plan?
Uh, it, the biggest impact would be either a loss of parking spaces, additional impervious towards the rear of the property where the residential properties abut this property. That, that's, it, it would negatively affect the way this layout works regarding parking and additional impervious.
Okay, and operationally, for the reasons that you mentioned, including the type of trucks that come and the hours of delivery that are scheduled, it sounds to me like there's not an operational need for a loading space. Is that fair to say?
No, or yes, it is fair to say, there is not a need for a loading space.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm going to talk a little bit about landscaping. What's, what's proposed on the site as far as landscaping goes?
Uh, so we're providing a, a nice mix of trees and shrubs throughout the property. We're trying to save, so the rear of the property, we're really not touching. There's mature trees and shrubs back there. There's also a large tree at the entrance that we're keeping. So we're providing what we believe is a nice landscaping package. In consultation with the board planner, we agreed to provide some more evergreen shrubs to the rear, some evergreen trees to provide additional flooring for the adjacent properties. The only item that we would like to push back on is the request for street trees. If this business is really dependent upon visibility, especially with the pylon sign and the building sign, so any sort of street trees takes away some of that visibility. So we would, if, if the board would like additional trees, we would be happy to plant them elsewhere on the property to make up for any street trees that you may want, but we just request that no street trees be required, especially since there's none currently existing.
Okay. Would the applicant be willing to work with Mr. Clear or Kalani on placement?
Yes, especially since we have to come back for final, no matter what. So we'll, we'll have this.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Yeah.
All right, you mentioned the visibility and sign, and so I think that's a good time to, you know, turn to what's proposed as far as the signs. And I think you mentioned the, the pylon sign on the streets, before we get to the facade sign. So there's an existing pylon sign on High Street, uh, correct?
Correct.
And we're not changing that sign other than to change the copy, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so other than, than the changing copy to that pylon sign, we're also proposing the six facade signs on the Taco Bell, which is the bell and the wordmark, one to be the first, uh, just correct?
Correct.
All right, can you show the, the A three and show where, where those signs are proposed?
Uh, so the two signs shown on this elevation on the tower, which is the, the northwest corner of the building. So one would face Route five forty-one and one would face Forest Traveling Set. So it would, and then the final sign is the sign shown on here, which is over the main entrance to the building. So it faces the parking lot.
Okay, and so I mentioned, well, so, so we need variance relief for the number of facade signs I mentioned earlier, correct?
Correct.
All right, and as far as sign square footage goes, so the ordinance, my, my reading of it would be that, you know, there's a sixty-square-foot limit on facade signs. So we, we obviously don't comply with that, because I think the, oh, the aggregate facade sign, not square footage, is about, oh, what is the, the square footage of the facade signs?
Uh, it is seventy-three point six five square feet.
Okay, so with the, with the six signs on the three footages of the building, we're over by about?
Fourteen square feet.
Fourteen square feet, okay, and, and each of these individually, each of these houses individually, you know, they're fair, I would agree they're fairly modest in size?
Yes, the two largest are the tower signs, and these combined are, I think they're about twenty-six or twenty-seven square feet each for the facades that they're on. If you've seen this rendering, they're, I don't believe they're obtrusive. It's just they, they want as much signage in as many directions as possible while not proposing an extreme size. And obviously what they focus on is the bell. If you see a bell, you know it's a Taco Bell. So they just want that to be as visible as possible, but they're, as indicated, they're, they're not, I don't believe they're obtrusively large at all, especially the one shown on this facade.
And so the, the, the intent of this, you know, having these signs on the various facades is to allow the driving public to identify the building as they're passing by, correct?
Correct.
And, and to some extent, the, the signage is, you know, mandated by, you know, there, it's a national brand, the signs have to be consistent, other than what's required by, by, by that brand, correct?
Uh, correct. These elevations are pretty much taken from the Taco Bell prototype plans. So there's, there's not a whole lot you can, they offer you some options, but there's really not much you can change. And typically signage is one of those things that you, they want you to meet their standards as much as possible.
Okay, and, and I also mentioned during my listening that there's, there is some variance or relief associated with the menu board signage, and that's as to the, the sign area for the menu board, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and so what's permitted as far as the sign area for a menu board, or for informational sign?
Uh, it's two square feet.
All right, is, I mean, is that going to be sufficient for a drive-through menu board?
No.
Okay, and so, and so what, what's the menu board sign, sign area that we are proposing?
So we are proposing a little over twenty-five square feet. It'll be about a five-by-five sign, and that sign is actually, it'll be a digital menu board. It's a lot smaller than previous iterations of the Taco Bell signage, because they weren't digital, so they needed to show everything. Taco Bell now provides breakfast as well, so there's a lot of menu items. And with a digital sign, you can rotate between each meal. So they're going with a smaller digital menu board so that they can only show what's relevant at the appropriate times that they come through the drive-through, which also helps with getting everyone through the drive-through lanes as quickly as possible. There's not information like once you hit the menu board.
And is there one of those menu boards proposed for each of the two drive-through lanes?
Yes.
Okay, and, and so each of those, oh, it'd be the twenty-five?
Yes.
That's fair, okay. All right, let's talk a little bit about school letter management. So what, just at a high level, I would view you as proposing as far as, as, for management.
Um, so actually there's a, a basin located on-site. It was installed about twenty-five years ago, I believe. So our plan is to propose a new basin in the same location, because the current one's not functioning the way it was designed. We received some, what I would say is atypical test results for the soil testing. We're getting more testing done. We think that the additional testing will back up the original design that we submitted. However, we have to meet the state stormwater requirements. So that, the main reason we're splitting preliminary and final approval is because if we can't get good tests in the back of the site, then we may have to relocate the stormwater system. So that'll all be worked out with the board engineer before we come back in front of you if we're granted preliminary approval. So we will meet the state's requirements.
Can you reiterate what you stated as pertains to the second retail space and the signage that's going to be on to that place?
So that will meet the, or there'll just be one facade sign that will not exceed sixty square feet. So it, it, based upon a conversation I had with the board planner, it was his interpretation that you're permitted one facade sign per use, not to exceed sixty square feet. So the facade signage for the retail use will meet the ordinance requirements.
Right, now, this exhibit A three also, it, in addition to signage, also depicts the proposed building, correct?
Correct.
The, the Taco Bell building. Is that, is that rendering consistent with what the actual building is going to look like?
Yes.
Okay, now, and, and the, the, the adjacent proposed retail building, that is, there's not a proposed user yet, it's, you know, to, to be determined, but it'll be, but it'll be complimentary to the Taco Bell building as far as I designed the building, correct?
Yes, I mean, the majority of this building is, is, or tone in nature, the retail obviously won't have the Taco Bell colors or anything like that, but it will, they'll be harmonious in design.
Okay, other than, I would, I would respect to the parking, loading, and sign variances that we talked about, it is, does this proposal comply with the other bulk requirements of the zone?
Yes.
Okay, building height?
Yes.
Backs?
Yep.
Coverage?
Yes.
Okay, now, just to, I'm going to talk, you know, just a little bit more, because we detailed them, you know, all the variances, basically, I want to make sure we talk a little bit more about the justification. So we talked about sort of the operational reasons why this number of parking spaces in this parking area and the lack of loading spaces are appropriate for this use. And I, I think your testimony, tell me if I got it wrong, is that, you know, this, by not proposing the loading spaces and by not, by not proposing the additional parking, we are able to provide kind of better circulation and reduce impervious coverage for, for the proposal. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, now, to, to justify variance under the land use law, we have, we have to, you know, show that we promote one of the purposes of zone. You know, some of those purposes include, among other things, that we promote general welfare, or that this is going to help promote a, a reduction in flood conditions, for example. Will, will, will the reduction in impervious, in proposed impervious coverage help to support that goal in your view?
Uh, yes, it would. Less impervious means less stormwater runoff. In addition, the only other place we have on the property to add impervious is to the rear of the property, which is closer to the adjacent residences, which we would rather avoid, because we don't want to disturb them for impervious that we think is unnecessary.
Okay, and, and I would respect to the loading space in particular, this, this, I think you mentioned it, I mean, it would essentially be, it would congest the site a little bit, that, to add that, that loading space. I think?
Yes.
We have a right, that same justification I would apply to, you know, we're, we are reducing proposed impervious coverage and try to provide better circulation while not providing too much impervious here. Is that a fair, fair characterization?
Yes, that's correct.
And same justification, I would respect to the one foot of reduction in length of the parking area, or of the parking spaces, is that?
Yes.
Okay, and with the signage, you know, we have a little bit about visibility of the site. I mean, are these signs, they're set up, they're, they're proposed in areas so that the, the driving public can identify the site, kind of make, see the site, know what it is, and makes safe traffic movements, is that, is that a fair?
Correct, that's correct.
Fair characterization, okay, and the, the, I would, I would have a little bit about the modest size and the design of the signs. Would you agree that those signs as proposed, you know, they're, they're, they're consistent with the, with other signs in the area?
Yes.
Okay, and, you know, designed in a way to not be too impactful, you know, sort of help to, help to promote a sort of attractive environment, fair to say?
Yes.
In your view, is this a proposal as a whole going to cause any detrimental impacts to the public or to this loading plan or to the, um, the ordinance?
Uh, I don't believe so.
And, and as we, you know, for sure the reasons, of, for the reasons that we talked about, a reduction in impervious and the side of school, the malpractice intended, right?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Clear, I think those are all the questions I have for you at this point, the board, or it's, or it's not professionals, I have some. Right, next I'd like to call, any questions? No questions, no questions. Okay, next I'd like to call, make a note with the contractor associates.
Mr. Moles, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do.
Did you hear this, John?
Um, yes.
I think we've seen him before this board before, and the board has accepted him and many other boards in Burlington County as an expert in traffic engineering.
Thank you.
He's accepted.
Great, thank you. So Nathan, your office prepared a traffic assessment for this application, correct?
That's correct. The, the assessment report was dated December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It was submitted with the application.
Okay, and I understand that it's part of your study, you examine condition, existing conditions on adjacent roadways, including the existing, of all service on those roadways, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I can give you just a quick brief overview. If you do have any questions, just let me know. So as far as trying to go out and establish the base conditions, you've heard some testimony already, but the existing Taco Bell obviously is located at the intersection of five forty-one and High Street, where the bypass comes in. So the bypass comes in, there's dual left turn lane to go north on five forty-one and continue on towards West Hampton and Burlington Township. Two lanes in each direction on the bypass, with the exception of Southbound, you have an outer lane that dumps into a far side jug handle as you go around that would take you back to the intersection as well. And then north on High Street, you have two through lanes and a dedicated left turn lane as well that will allow movements from High Street onto the bypass today. So in order to get an idea on what the existing volumes were like and knowing the type of use that we have proposed with the existing and future Taco Bell, we went out and we did traffic counts, and those counts were done on a Friday and a Saturday. We wanted to make sure we kind of captured the peak times of both, not only the site, but also the existing roadway conditions. So we counted on Friday from seven AM to nine AM to get the morning time information. We also counted midday from eleven AM to two PM. Then we also counted in the evening from four PM to six PM to capture that evening commuter peak coming back from work, anybody grabbing some dinner on the way. And then on Saturday, we counted from eleven AM, from eleven AM to two PM. And what we found is that those typically represent the peak times when you look at both the roadway volumes that are out there today. And what we found is that those typically represent the peak times when you look at both the roadway volumes that are out there today plus the volumes on the site itself. So once we established those base conditions, then we wanted to look to the future conditions to see how much traffic we would anticipate that would be added to the network as a result of the redevelopment of the Taco Bell, plus obviously the expansion of the add of the additional retail building next to it. So we did a combination of looking at the existing volume going in and out of the site. We also looked at a comparable site in Mount Efreem, where there's another Taco Bell facility that has a Pizza Hut located on the same property as it. And then we also looked at the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is a national organization that's done studies of retail buildings and fast food restaurants throughout the country, and compiled all of that data into the Trip Generation Manual, the eleventh edition. And we looked at all of those different sources to kind of come up with a worst case, you know, scenario analysis for the additional trips that would be added. In my opinion, the main traffic increase that you'll see is just a result of the new retail tenant that will be on the site. There may be some increase in traffic. Hopefully, I'm sure the Taco Bell franchisee wants some more traffic as a result of the changes and improvements that are being made. But I do anticipate that most likely the traffic for the Taco Bell itself will be very similar to the existing volumes that we observed out there. They may increase slightly as it becomes more efficient with the new drive-through layout. But I think the majority of the additional trips that will be added will be directly related to the retail building that's going to be proposed on site because that's essentially a new use compared to what you have today. So once we determined the additional trips that would be added, we, we included those into the existing volume counts that we'd already done. We wanted to really just focus on those peak hours, the busiest times in the morning, in the middle of the day, in the afternoon, and then on a Saturday. So when we looked at all the data we collected, we really isolated it down to that busiest one hour during each of those peak periods that we counted. We also did some additional background growth to look to the future, just assuming there's going to be additional traffic increased in this area as a result of other development, increases in population, et cetera. Those rates are provided to us by the NJDOT. They're standard based upon the location within the state and the type of roadway that you're on. But we look basically to the future, we add some additional traffic, and then we compare the future conditions without any additional trips from this site, and then the future conditions with the additional traffic to see if there's going to be any changes in what we call levels of service, and then the impact as a result of the traffic from this expansion and this redevelopment. So a level of service is a way as traffic engineers that we look at the operations of an intersection, whether it's a signalized intersection, we have here in this case, or it's a stop control intersection. And basically, levels of service are the experiences that a motorist or a vehicle traveling through an intersection has based upon delays that they experience. So level service A for a traffic signal means that you have minimal delays. You're maybe experiencing anywhere from ten to fifteen seconds of average delay per vehicle going through an intersection during those peak hours, down to a level service F where you're experiencing maybe a minute or more, you know, you're sitting there for two or three cycles trying to get through an intersection under, you know, under typical peak conditions. So in this case, for the existing intersection of five forty-one and High Street, the existing intersection operates in an overall level service C, as in cat, during both the AM, the midday, and the PM conditions during the, on a weekday. In this case, it was a Friday. And then also at an overall level service C on a Saturday during the peak hour as well. When we look to the future, we add an additional traffic just from general background growth, but nothing new from this site. The intersection still continues to operate in overall level service C during all four of those peak hour conditions. And then when we look to the future again, and we look at the additional traffic from our site and if there's going to be any impact from that, again, we found that the intersection still will continue to operate in overall level service C during all of those peak hour conditions. The intersection itself geometrically, it's pretty well built out. It's got multiple lanes in all directions. The county has done a good job of trying to really optimize the available traffic signal to ensure that it gives the most amount of green time to the majority of the approaches where all the volume is located. Most of your volume is on five forty-one south or on the bypass itself. High Street's kind of the third tier roadway coming out of Mount Holly. And obviously, the Taco Bell driveway is really kind of the, the lowest, the lowest one on, on the total poll. It gets a minimal amount of green time. But again, it can still operate efficiently and effectively even with that design. And we have received conditional approval from the county already. They have reviewed the traffic study and everything that's been submitted to you as well. And they have issued that conditional approval. They did not have any comments related to traffic or related to any changes being required at the existing signalized intersection to accommodate the additional trips that would be resulting from this site. So I think as far as the operations are concerned, and our impact from a level service perspective, you're really not going to see a significant change. And I believe that the intersection itself can accommodate the additional trips that will be generated by this site. Then in addition to that, we also did a couple of additional studies. One thing was we looked at the drive-through queuing. We looked at the existing Taco Bell for the, for the purpose of evaluating the drive-through operations. And then we also looked at the onsite parking. Obviously, you've heard some testimony. We do have a parking variance that we're requesting for this site. But I just wanted to speak to those two things real quick as well. So the future development, as you can see here, before you were proposing two order menu locations, we have an extended long single lane between those order, the menu positions and the pickup window. And then we obviously have some available stacking beyond the orders board itself for vehicles for the way to come in. So with this plan in front of you, there's a total of fourteen vehicles stacked within this area. We have two-way traffic through here, and then we have one-way traffic flows around, parking here and here, angle parking around the rear and on the sides as well. But again, we have fourteen vehicles stored here. So we did parking, or we did drive-through and parking counts at the existing Taco Bell on a Friday from eleven AM to two PM, from four PM to seven PM. And then on Saturday, we did, we did parking and drive-through counts from tw- twelve PM noon till two PM in the afternoon, and then from five PM till nine PM. So it felt like that really captured the peak times for that existing site, which typically is the lunchtime and the evening dinnertime, and actually a little bit after your five o'clock rush, typically like six o'clock, we saw some increased parking as well and increase in the drive-through. So what we found was that during the peak hours, whether it's the middle of the day on a Friday or Saturday, or whether it's the middle of the day on a Saturday or, uh, a Saturday, or an evening on a Saturday, the average queue in the drive-through lane, the highest observed was on a Friday in the evening around seven, in the evening time, the average was six point three vehicles every time we did our count. We did our count every three minutes for all those times listed. So the average queue maximum was six point three. We did see one instance where there were fifteen vehicles in the queue, and that was from the, the window all the way back. Again, we have fourteen vehicles here. I do believe we can easily put an additional vehicle here without impacting onsite circulation. So I do believe, even if it were to hit that fifteen vehicle queue again, that it can be safely accommodated. But what we saw too was that as soon as it got really, really busy and that far out, typically, things kind of picked up and within a couple of minutes, at most, the queue was reduced down to ten or less vehicles again as people went through the drive-through. So I do believe that this is designed for the drive-through lane in safety to accommodate the maximum queues, and there won't be any impact to the onsite circulation for somebody trying to go through the site when it is at the peak time for the drive-through lane itself. And then as far as the parking is concerned, again, we did parking counts during all those times I just discussed on a Friday and a Saturday. What we saw was that the peak parking demand or the most cars that we saw on this site at any one time occurred on a Friday at twelve thirty, was it twelve thirty in the afternoon? This was a combination of employee plus patron vehicles. And we counted a total of eighteen vehicles on that Friday at twelve thirty for the Taco Bell itself. Friday evening, the peak time, peak mount was thirteen vehicles. Saturday, middle of the day, was ten vehicles. And Saturday evening was seven vehicles. The averages were typically anywhere from five to about eight vehicles, other than the Friday midday where we hit eleven vehicles on average. And that's parked vehicles in the, in the lot itself. So as far as the parking variance is concerned, we have about a twenty-six hundred square foot retail building. Under your ordinance, that would require thirteen parking spaces. If we add that to the maximum observed parking for the Taco Bell, which was eighteen, that would give us a total of thirty-one parking spaces anticipated for the peak demand. Again, we have forty-six spaces. That, that leaves us with a minimum of fifteen additional spaces onsite, which is roughly thirty to thirty-five percent of our total supply. So that's a good amount of available parking if there were for some reason to be an increase in parking needs. But I do believe that, you know, the granting of the variance with regards to the parking is substantiated based upon the parking analysis that we've done, plus the requirements in your ordinance for the retail building itself. And I think that the forty-six spaces will be more than sufficient to accommodate the peak parking demands and needs for this site itself. So I think, I wanted to touch on.
I was going to ask you, is there any else?
Could you talk about the queuing at the order boards? I mean, one of my concerns was that you might get some backup in front of those retail parking spaces.
Sure. So the, the order menus are, are right here. If you can see my, where I'm pointing, kind of tucked up. And then beyond that, we have the kind of stacking area as you approach the pickup window itself. Currently, we show three vehicles in each lane from the menu board back. So we can probably easily add at least one vehicle in this area without impacting any of the parking. And potentially, you know, another vehicle would be, you know, just encroaching on maybe one or two of those spaces along the front edge. This area in between, I will point out, is twenty-eight feet, so it is an oversized circulation aisle in between the parking and the, in the front of the buildings, I would say. Typically, you have a twenty-four foot aisle, so there is additional room in there for vehicles to get around, somebody could work to be extended. But what I see normally is that where you want the most available stacking is between the menu board and the pickup window because typically, people can process very quickly through the menu board. A lot of times when someone pulls up, they know exactly what they want. They order quickly and they're through. And then typically, you know, once you get them into this area, then obviously it may take a little bit longer internally to get the orders made or picked, you know, processed so that people can pick them up. But what this does is give a lot of space in here. So I do think that given the layout, they will be able to operate very efficiently. They will be able to get people through here. I don't, I don't anticipate there'll be extensive queuing back into the parking area that will impact people that are parked here. And again, most of the parking, I would think, is going to be related to the Taco Bell and located, you know, immediately in this area. Obviously, the operator can encourage their employees to park in some of the more remote spots that will be, you know, really utilized by customers. So that will keep the primary spaces in the front of the buildings available for those customers that are going to be coming in and out.
Was there any indication on where vehicles are going to have to park? If there are issues getting the food delivery at the pickup window, where they're parking for, that the staff should come out and deliver their food, keep them ready?
I don't believe we have any specific spaces designated for that. But I'm sure that they would be able to pull around to one of these spaces and then some staff member could come out and bring, bring something to them. But we don't have any specific, you know, designated, you know, pickup spaces like some, some, some users do.
My question is, in regards to the retail buildings, are you allowing traffic to, is it continuing to go through that booth? Like pass the driveway through that bypass, or will it be able to pull from the retail pole and go straight to the light?
Yeah, so basically, anywhere from about, you know, right around here, here over, you'll be able to, you know, back out and come straight back out to the light. If you were parked in one of these spaces, you would have to back out and circulate around the building to come out.
Was there an assumption about a specific number of employees in relation, and how many parking spaces they would have? I know we haven't had that testimony yet.
For the top, for the Taco Bell.
Yeah, I mean, is that based on how many employees park?
So, so we did our parking study just based on the existing condition, you know, assuming that, you know, the number of employees they have there today will be similar to the number of employees in the future. Even if, even if the employees were to increase by, you know, one or two, or maybe even three or four, there's more than enough parking, even if each of those additional employees need their own space to accommodate them. But I do believe that, you know, the parking numbers will be similar to what's already, what we observed out there today for the existing facilities.
Behind the menu boards, what, what would you say is the typical, and you have a single lane, not dual lane, how many vehicles are typically parked behind the menu boards?
Uh, behind the menu boards, that really can vary. It varies more based upon the layout of each individual site. What I normally like to see for a fast food restaurant is a minimum of, you know, twelve. You're going to stack twelve vehicles from the pickup window back to the entry point to the drive-through lane, wherever that may be, regardless of the entry, regardless of the menu board itself. That's what I look for.
My only concern is, and I, I, we discussed this during the concept meeting, I drive down that road often. And I haven't seen it lately, but there, you know, probably last year sometime, I would drive by there frequently. And the vehicles would be stacked up almost coming to the traffic light. There was so much use. So now you, you're already counting dual lanes, so that, that, that's going to help the situation. But, you know, it just seems a concern, it's a concern to me based on what I've seen. Yeah, I got, you know, well, I guess we'll see. You know, I asked during the concept whether there was going to be additional employees to help, help the ordering go quicker. And you mentioned the, the, the smaller menu board would help, I guess, for that.
Yeah.
But I think the answer was during the concept meeting that there wasn't additional employees necessarily.
Yeah, so I, I don't know about the employees. I can tell you, I've had several fast food type facilities where we had issues with stacking relative to, you know, the fact where a lot of those restaurants were going, you know, they were closing their interior seating areas, especially in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, you know, middle, early to middle twenty twenty-one. And we had issues, you know, where they're, you know, hundred percent of the drive-through lane, so they were having problems with stacking coming out. But again, we were there in October. We were there on Friday and a Saturday. We did extensive parking counts. We didn't see anything beyond fifteen total vehicles at that location during all of those times. And I do believe that, you know, this layout and this, this operation, you know, can accommodate the needs for this use.
Was the square footage of seating in the facility, did it maintain the same square footage or did it shrink?
The overall billing footprint for the Taco Bell has, has reduced. I don't know how, if there's a, if there's a difference in the patron area from the existing billing to the future billing as far as the square footage of that. But the overall billing itself has reduced in size from the existing billing.
Right, no, I only ask because there's also an outdoor patio area as well.
Yeah, there's a small outdoor seating area.
Right, so they're putting together a space inside shrink, including with the parking spaces that shrink? Or it grew because there's no patio area, so the situation that we're going to be sitting and eating at a patio.
We can address that as part of the operational testimony.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Mosley? Thanks. Thank you. Last, I'd like to call up Joe Pascal to explain about the.
Mr. Pascal, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you do us a favor and tell us your, how do you spell your last name?
Certainly. P E, capital P A S C A L D.
And your title?
Development Manager.
All right. Joe, so just for the first things first, I mentioned in my opening comments that there's, that the building is going to be constructed sort of to make the operations more efficient as it relates to the drive-through. Can you briefly speak to that?
Yeah, yeah. So the, the prototype building that we're building now has fifty-two seats inside, and then the patio seating, which, we're in the northeast, it's not used all the time, obviously, except for this winter, you know, clearly. But most of the redesign of the building has to do with the back of house. So we, right now, we don't really use the pay window and the, and the pickup window as much. This is now, we closed it to double drive-throughs, which we're adding to all our stores that we rebuild in all our new stores. We add the double drive-through. The pickup window is being utilized, let the people, are going to be about the same. Our max on any shift might be five or six. And as Nathan mentioned about, you know, parking, we have a lot of young kids. Most of them don't necessarily drive themselves. They get dropped off, whatever. So we don't have, you know, six people driving cars and parking in parking lots. But the, most of this is more operational back of house, wider aisles, adding, you know, lines for production and those kinds of things. Not seating because we don't use as much seating anymore.
And so with, and with the dual drive-through, so essentially two, two customers coming through the drive-through can order at once, right?
Correct.
And these back of the house improvements are going to, to allow for those two orders to be processed at the same time?
Correct.
Okay. So, so essentially, more orders can get processed in less time?
Yes.
With these improvements? Okay. And I mentioned, I think, I was, Mr. Clear, you also mentioned that the vast majority of the, of the business comes through the drive-through. Is that right?
Yes. Yeah, obviously with COVID, we, we saw that. We were closed inside. But we're probably, I think Brian said eighty, eighty-five. That's, that's consistent with what we're seeing. And, and we operate a hundred and eighty-five stores in six states, so, you know, you know. And, and like I said, we're doing this at all of them now. now, where we can.
And, and so you're doing this, you're, you're adding this dual drive-through and adding these operational efficiencies to-
Correct.
I mean, be- because that helps to support the business that you're actually seeing and I think the, these improvements, um, help, you know, push the business after the drive-through that needs to go through, right?
Correct.
I mean, it's enough to accommodate other demand.
Yes.
And, um, I want to talk a little bit of, uh, just about, on the basics, like hours of operation for the Taco Bell, how would they going to be?
They'll be exactly what they are today. I believe that this store is eight AM till midnight inside, and then they close the inside and the drive-through's typically open till one during the weekend and two on the weekends.
Okay, and so, and so no change to-
No. The only much change could be, if the breakfast business picks up, like, they might open earlier, some of them open at seven, but this one's at eight AM.
Okay. Um, and you mentioned, um, no proposed change for number of employees, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, the retail space, uh, Brian mentioned, it could be a cell phone store, uh, for example, it's not set in zone at this point, right?
Yeah, we, we've, we own, uh, probably eighty percent of our properties, and as we're developing new ones, we're, you know, buying larger parcels if it's required. We already own this, there's a little space, uh, we're going to put a pad in there, obviously some extra income for the, uh, the ownership side of the house and not the operational side, so.
But-
I, I don't know who it is, I don't, we, you know, we'll have to market it and see where we can find, but that's what I anticipate, something like that.
Okay. Yeah. Um, I think those are all the questions I had for you unless the board or question was-
Well, you mentioned that, the, the, all the loading and all that, so-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
Again, we operate this restaurant today, to my knowledge, there's no issues. Township would probably let us know that, it'll work. Trucks are doing the same thing now that they're going to do then, you know, then, they pull in, they sit in front of the, uh, the building, there's a door, uh, a man door that they load through, and then they circulate around the building. It'll be exactly as it is today.
I can tell you I've never seen a truck drive.
Yeah, yeah, it's because they go at, at three AM, and you're, and you're not going to be out there. Yeah, and, and same with trash, again, it's our, it's our, you know, our haulers, they're doing what they're doing today, you know?
All right, Joe, those are all questions I had for you.
So you're confirming the testimony about the queue?
Cor- correct.
All right, and so that concludes all the testimony from our witnesses, uh, tonight.
Yep.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and open it in public at this point, any commentary on this? Five minutes for our first thing. Please, uh, stand, state your name and address for the record.
Carolyn O'Neill, seven twenty Holly Lane, bottom of the mound.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely. So on all these plans, it's always unclear how well the retention pond is going to handle the water if it's more than just an average storm, and since we're prone to nor'easters, that water winds up in my basement because we have many non-functioning retention ponds. So I want to know how, at least for the Taco Bell piece, for the non-